Call this meeting to order for Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. Janet, roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Dunn?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Thank you all for having us today. Would you please just bow your head and bow your heart with me as we pray. Father, I thank you for the great love that you have for us in Christ. I thank you that the proof of your love was found in his sacrifice for us. But I thank you also just for those who serve our community. It's because of the hours that they put in of meetings and conversations and I'm sure countless text messages and emails. The hours that they put in serve us as a community, families in the community, individuals in the community. Thank you so much for their hard work. Would you please give them wisdom for this meeting today? Hope them to have a wisdom that would benefit the people truly and benefit the people here in this community so that their lives would flourish because of their sacrifice. Thank you for today, and we thank you for another day of life in Jesus' name. Amen.
Derek, correspondence today?
Yeah, we have Dallas here to give us an update on what's going on over at the hospital.
So. Dallas want to come up and tell us some good news?
I've got just a couple of handouts for you all.
Dallas?
Good morning.
Thank you. We're sticking together?
How you doing? Great to see you. Good morning, right? You bet. Oh, yeah. We need the ring. That's right. On my last. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Commissioners, thank you all for taking the time to allow us to just update you a little bit. As you know, the process on sales tax dollars for which we're very grateful for goes through our RMH Board for approval. So each year, we take that through the RMH Board, which has been put together to represent the county relative to the hospital. But I wanted to make sure to keep you guys apprised of, as the elected commissioners, keep you apprised of how those dollars are being used as the representatives here in the county. So we do it on an annual basis. And so the 2021 dollars we talked about just over a year ago, talked about how we plan to use those. But we know operations can change throughout a year. And so we adjust and adapt how we use those dollars and then take that back to the RMH Board. So if you look there at the list, charity care was something that we designated a million dollars for. Our actual charity care far exceeds that number. That's uncompensated care that we provide to the community through a variety of forms. That probably the biggest form would be through your emergency department setting for which you're going to care for patients, all comers that come through your department. So we earmarked those dollars, and you can kind of see as we walked down the approved line and the actual line as how we had allocated those and how we used them. So if you get to the second line there, the pharmacy compliance, there we actually, that project came in under budget. And so we're excited that we didn't have to spend all that, those dollars in that particular project. We repositioned the pharmacy upstairs, actually in our building, which allowed us to exhaust things out in a much more efficient way than trying to break through cinder block walls that we were currently bound in the basement. So that project's ongoing right now, but the capital has been allocated for that and set aside for that right now. So that was obviously a delta there. We moved forward with a microscope replacement. A routine capital was approved at 100 to adjust or to utilize that. We ended up using more dollars there. That goes for a range of things that are lower dollar items that you use and require to make a hospital go. A colonoscope would be an example, or another piece of equipment that just standardly is utilized in our operating areas. And then lastly, as you're familiar, we set up a cancer infusion center just over a year ago. And so we invested some dollars into that, didn't end up having to be as much as we had earmarked. So we ended up using more of our dollars towards charity care than we had previously budgeted or planned for. Again, I would tell you that that our charity care number far exceeds where that 1.4 million is at. But that's how we ended up designating that and shifting those dollars, which we had shared with our RMH Board. As we look forward, and any questions on that?
It's all about charity care. That's such a broad term.
Yeah. So that would be any care that we provide care for that we're not compensated for essentially. So we have a whole lot of, I say a whole lot of, there's a significant number of patients that come through that are uninsured.
What percent would you say is like contractual write offs?
What percent is contractual write offs versus?
Versus bad debt, versus sliding fee scales or some kind of, you know?
Right. I've got our CFO here, and she could probably give you a little more depth on that if you'd like to hear that. And I'd be happy to have her step in and give you a little more on that. But she is here.
So the way our charity care process works is that, as Dallas mentioned, for uninsured patients, if they choose to apply following our charity care policy, then they can apply for that. And so that that takes care of their complete bill. So it does not apply to, there's no contractual adjustment for that or any bad debt. So we typically don't use our charity care for bad debt. It's for truly, truly uninsured patients who go through our charity process, and it's 100% of their bill is taken care of.
And that's what 100% of that money goes towards?
Of that charity care money? Yeah, that 100% of that is for uninsured patients.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you think that your charity care wasn't?
Oh, sorry. It's for uninsured patients or patients who have applied?
It's for uninsured patients who have applied.
Who have applied.
Yes. So you, so there's multiple criteria. So one, you have to be uninsured, but then you also have to go and apply through our process. So there's various other criteria that you have to meet. So if you're uninsured, but financially you are able to pay your bills. So there's an income component that goes into that. And it's, it's a, it's an application you have to fill out where you provide us with all the appropriate information. But it's a very generous policy overall.
Yeah. So there's no pathway for somebody who, say, does have insurance, but low income and has a, you know, major medical issue. So, I mean, it's a real hardship for them. There's no way for them to access the money?
That doesn't fall into our charity care policy. So that would probably go into bad debt. So we do also have, in addition to this, a significant amount of bad debt write offs that we just write off every year. So essentially, if.
But they would still go through the debt collection process and have the effects of bad debt?
So the charity care does not affect their credit rating? It doesn't go on to?
Charity, no. It does not.
That being said, walking through that process, I think, as Harmatt shared, we, with any patient, we would seek to, there's payment plans and other avenues to try to mitigate those situations that you're referring to in which they may or may not have all the funds at the time of particular service.
Do you think your charity care was more this year because of COVID?
Our charity care is actually much higher than this. This is just the amount of sales tax allocated to that. Our charity care was a little bit higher this year, but I'm not sure if it's necessarily tied to COVID. It ebbs and flows.
So is charity care, you say your charity care, other than this is quite high, is it, so is that money you guys earmark and put towards this program as well? Or is what you're calling charity care on your end, is that bad debt?
No, it's the same charity care. So essentially, anyone who falls within our Advent Health charity care policy is going to receive charity. And so if our, if just for example, if our total charity expense for years, $2,000, or I'm sorry, $2 million, we're saying we allocated this much of sales tax to fund, and the rest of it is just funded through the hospital. So regardless of whether this funding is there or not, we will comply with our charity care policy. And so there's no limit to say we're out of charity dollars if they fall into our policy.
But that's money's just for uninsured patients with low income?
Mm-hmm.
What, absent charity care, what's your collection rate on that debt?
On just normal outpatient?
Uninsured?
Uninsured.
It's very small, less than 3%.
So it was not going to be paid anyways?
Yeah.
97%?
Yeah. I will say to your, to your previous question on just bad debt collections, we do allow patients upwards of a three-year payment plan to, so we work with them as far as minimum payments. And we're, we're fairly realistic in our expectations that if it's not paid after three years, it probably will not be paid. And at that point, it does usually go to a bad debt write off.
But they still, I mean, have the implications of the debt collection, the credit?
Well, if we work, if they're on a payment plan, it's not debt collections, and it doesn't go on their, on their credit at that point, because we're working with them on a plan.
Or the hardship of, yeah.
Yeah. It's, the ones that go to collections are typically the ones that are not in any communication with us and have not elected to set up any kind of payment plan.
I have a question.
Okay.
You can sit tight if you want.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So as we look forward to 2022, we have set aside, we earmarked another million dollars. There's not a magic number on that, but obviously, that's a portion, we want to care for the community. And that, from a board perspective, was believed to be a valuable item that they wanted to allocate toward. Couple other things that you all are familiar about with the rehab relocation, as well as our physician clinic relocation. We talked about this back hallway a few months ago. And you were gracious enough to allow us to combine Suites Three and Four, which is going to make a beautiful rehab location there. And so allocating, earmarking some of that, those dollars towards the capital required to build that out, that space out and make that space full. Also, dollars will be allocated in the Gargo Center down at Ninth, Tenth, and Ninth and Main to get that project shifted towards a full physician outpatient clinic, which gives us more than double the space for physicians in the community to be able to come in and be able to provide care to our patients here. So that is, this is, that's a two-year project. So there may be dollars that would be earmarked for that next year as well, out of these sales tax dollars as we look forward. So 550 is set aside for that. And again, that's a $4.4 million spend, but grateful for the dollars that we get to use towards that. And then the last is routine capital, which, again, this will outspend the 155 that's earmarked there, but we will, we are appreciative of those dollars being tied for routine capital, continuing to invest in our hospital and making sure that it's a place that each of you are proud to go get your care at. And we feel really strongly about the quality that we're providing there. So wanted to give you guys updates on this front. Though it's always an interesting topic, and we're grateful for the support that you all have committed to the hospital and couldn't do it without you. So thank you. I don't know that I have any other updates on the, well, on the construction front. I would just say, we have design plans in place for both spaces. Those have gone out to bid. It'll be a competitive bidding process, as one would expect. And we look forward to enhancing the medical facilities here in the county.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
No. Just wanted to ask one question. Had been helped at the winning car, NASCAR race, had the winning car in the NASCAR race this last weekend. And are you going to bring it to town to show us or?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So that would, that would be great. I suspect that there might be an opportunity for you, as you may have seen Advent Health as a corporation, and I wouldn't say this is Ottawa specific, but as a corporation, there's an additional stop now in Kansas City. So the May race will be designated, the Advent Health 400, and we would have, Ross Chastain would be the driver for that. So if there would be an interest in, if any of you all have an interest in that, I suspect there'd be an opportunity to get closer to the action. So let us know.
Glad you told us that.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in today.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Any public comment today, Janet?
No.
The Senate agenda today is consider an approved Franklin County Commissioner meeting minutes for March 16th and Commission Study Session on March 21st. Motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Items of business, consider for approval, providing premium pay to county employees pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act. Derek?
Thanks, Roy. We had extensive discussion about this at Monday's study session, and certainly don't feel the need to walk back through all of that. But just a brief overview, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed back in March of 2021. One of the initial carve outs under ARPA was premium pay for employees. And this is something that we've seen organizations do across the entire country, across the state of Kansas, and certainly some of our competitors here close to home have done the same thing. We have put in front of you a policy that we discussed at length on Monday. And I'll say this again, we, this policy was put together by our employee retention committee. Nine employees that represent a good cross section of the county, frankly, some of the best employees that we have. And this policy is the unanimous recommendation of those employees. And it was arrived at after hours and hours of discussion. We were all happy with it. Our responses thus far, based on people who listened to Monday's study session, have been very positive by and large. Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. One of the things that we pointed out on Monday, and this is a fluid amount. I mean, initially, our projections said that this was going to come in at about 330,000. Yesterday, the number I gave you was 316,678.46. That is a fluid number, because you have to be employed on the date of the special payroll to receive it. And that's not going to be until mid-April. And so that number could change. I will tell you, there are a couple of very, I feel very minor nips and tucks that I need to make, just based on discussions with Sari and a couple other members of our committee, but they're not going to be substantial. And so what I am asking for today is approval of this policy. And again, the funds committed are going to be, I think, somewhere between 315 and $320,000.
Of course, the only thing we deviated from the original recommendation from that committee was we made sure to back out the commissioners.
Yes.
That, of course, not being, in our minds, the intent of the money. It's to appreciate the employees who stuck with us through a tough labor market and a few tough years and show gratitude towards them. So that could be another reason it come down, so.
Yeah, no, that's, I appreciate you pointing me that out, pointing that out, Cole. The other thing that we talked about, just for perspective, you know, we talked about Anderson County's done this, Miami County's done this. I mean, in so many ways, Miami County is a great comp for us from a population standpoint, from a budget standpoint. So we're going to be right around 320,000. Miami County's, according to my staff, is up around 880,000. And so we do feel like this is fiscally responsible. I mean, we've received 5.2-ish million dollars, or we will. This amount's going to represent somewhere around 6% of that. So we still have ample funding to do as the five of you wish. And certainly, that will be a topic this year. And we'll probably start discussing it fairly soon, how we want to allocate some of those funds. So any questions that the five of you have for me? Once again, have my entire employee retention committee here, happy to.
No questions, but I'm very appreciative that there's this committee of several county employees out there, sitting out there from the whole spectrum, that put this together and brought it to us, and makes our job a lot easier. They have done it. They're the ones going to have to, we have to live with it too, but they have to, you know, they represent all aspects of the county. So I feel coming from them, they've distributed it in the fairest way they could figure out to do it.
Absolutely.
So I'd just like to thank all of them for doing all that and giving us, we all know that we need to do something. And it's good to do it, knowing that they feel that's the right thing to do. And we're hopefully doing the right thing. That's all I get.
Well, and we know that this is just the first step. If you guys are gracious enough to pass this, we understand that this doesn't, you know, it's not going to solve our retention issues. It's not. But it is an exceptional showing of belief and appreciation by the Board of County Commissioners, kind of unlike any that the county, I think, has probably seen, certainly in my time, if not historically, like, this will really be appreciated. And certainly appreciate the willingness to engage in this discussion and certainly hope that you will pass this plan.
I mean, and we could spend more. We could spend $800,000. But we're looking long term and hoping that with some of the other decisions that we do, we could do more down the road. And I just kind of, I had written this, I wanted to make sure. So two years ago, when COVID hit and our whole world changed, Governor Kelly sent all of her workers home. But our people came to work every day. When schools stopped and all of our parents became teachers, when it was hard, almost impossible to find daycare, our people still came. When people got COVID or their families got COVID, and they had to quarantine, sometimes multiple times, our departments stayed open every day for the last two years, except for the infamous, what, two days that we had to shut down one of our departments, because everybody and that, one of our citizens like to keeps reminding us of. But we stay, we stay open, and we provide services, all services, every day for the last two years, all the way through COVID. If we were a private company, we could give bonuses, but we have this thing called a budget that doesn't allow us to do that. And we tell our people that we appreciate them. And this is one way we can say, no, we really do. We really, really do appreciate you. And this has given us an opportunity to do it without using tax dollars to do it. And I think it's a great idea.
Well, and I, and I appreciate all of that. And you're right. And I want to emphasize, these are federal stimulus dollars. This is not Franklin County ad valorem property tax. And we did this with CARES Act funds, too. We use CARES Act funding to handle expenses that offset property taxes. So we have put these dollars to use in a way that alleviates the tax burden on Franklin County citizens. And I suspect our recommendations, should the Board choose to take them regarding ARPA dollars, are going to do the same thing. It's going to be, okay, we've got these projects, they're going to require budgeted property tax dollars. Let's, let's think about, especially if it's a one-time expense, let's use ARPA funds. And then that, of course, results in the property tax savings. Like, we try to remain cognizant of all of the angles, all of the competing priorities that we have as an organization. We want to appreciate our people. We also want to show our citizens we're not being wasteful or extravagant, I guess, with your tax dollars. So. Any other questions before?
Thank you, Derek. Does any, I appreciate what the committee did for us, because we've been looking to do something for quite a while now. And does any of the committee want to say anything before we take a vote? Okay.
Roy, before you do that, I do want to call special attention to one of them. Jeff Welton has actually said that any complaints about this, you call me.
So Jeff?
No, I am just kidding about that. Please, please call any member of the employee retention committee, but.
Well, I was waiting for Jeff to come up and chew us out.
Thank you.
Positive motion would read, I make the motion, approve Franklin County's policy providing premium pay to its employees pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Janet?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Glad to do it.
Yeah. Thank you guys very, very much. Yeah, I really appreciate it.
If everyone wants to go back to work. How's the time? If you want to stay for the rest of me, that's fine, too. Okay, we're going to do a zoning deal, so everybody wants to stay for that, I'm sure.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request is a request to rezone property that's currently zoned A1, and will actually have two different rezonings going on with it. Part of the property would be rezoned to the A2 Transitional Agriculture District, and then another tract would be zoned from the A1 District to the RE Residential Estate District. The property is located at Pawnee Road and Idaho Road. Originally, this was an 80-acre tract, and the current owner of the property did a exempt split to split into basically two 40-acre parcels. And then one of those 40-acre tracts is the one that got split into, or is proposed to be split into 13- and 27-acre parcel. The 13-acre parcel has an existing dwelling already on it. I think we did, it took a little bit of time to get all of the documentation from the property and all this, but they were able to show that the property did have sufficient water. It is currently on a well. And I think the capacity of the well was a little bit lower, but it ended up coming in just a little bit above what our sort of minimum standard is. So they're getting like seven gallons per minute on their well, where we usually want at least five gallons per minute. So lower side, but did sort of pass that requirement. The other 27-acre tract is one that an individual is wanting to purchase to build their dwelling on. And then the same individual that's buying that 27 acres is buying, I think, the 40 acres adjacent to it that they'll be using for agricultural purposes. So the planning commission did make a recommendation of approval of the request. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The only question I have, Kenny, was about the issue of a well for the water source.
Yes.
The person wasn't going to plan on building a house on a parcel. That would be a mute issue. Is that correct?
Yeah. So how it's worded in our regulations is if, if the tract that is being created is more than 20 acres in size, then we don't typically require the proof of water, mainly because I think once you get to 20 acres in size, it's a little bit more likelihood that it's going to be used for some type of agricultural purpose. And I think even if you can't get water. And I think even if you can't get water, you still sort of have a valid use on that property. For parcels that are less than 20 acres, generally, we require that proof of water either for rural water district has the ability to place a meter on the property and provide water or for a well that would be able to provide enough. I'm trying to think of, I've, I've talked with a few individuals, I think it, I think it was with another county. And I think they, they had a couple of times where they approved a split that was less than like 20, that didn't necessarily have water. But in like that scenario, I think they required that, that property owner to sort of sign some type of statement saying that they understand that there, there is no proof of water and if they can't get water there, they're not going to be able to build a house on the property. But, but in general, if it's less than 20 acres, our, our standards are that we're supposed to, they're supposed to provide that documentation to us, so.
I think out this way, they don't have rural water available.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And, and I would just note it's a slightly different one, but the same property owner was wanting to do one, sort of a similar request just to the east of here. And on that property, they only had two hand-dug wells, one of which had already gone dry before. And, and so that request will be coming to you guys in a couple of weeks and was a recommendation of denial because we weren't able to get any kind of documentation that, that they had sufficient water. So.
Okay. Any questions about this rezoning request? Yeah, positive, an affirmative motion would read, I make the motion to approve rezoning application number 2111-1936 Shoemaker to rezone approximately 27.19 acres from an A1 Agriculture District to an A2 Transitional Agriculture District and to rezone approximately 13 acres from an A1 Agriculture District to an RE Residential Estate District and amend official county zoning map accordingly. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Janet?
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Cheer done.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Number three is consider approving or not, or approving the Culver bid to contact Engineering Solutions LLC for 94 various sized pipes in the amount of $75,262.87, or 97 cents? Jeff, you going to do that?
Good morning, commissioners. And Janet? Derek?
I'm filling in for David, he couldn't be here this morning. But I, I believe Contact was our lowest bid. He had four bids and Contact was the lowest bid by approximately $1,230. We currently are quite low on our, our bid supply. We've had the flood last year, last few years that we've been working throughout the summer months and installing a lot of pipe. So our numbers are low, but the good news is most of our small pipe has actually reduced in cost and we're actually catching a pretty good time before the construction season. So we have more pipe to try to get on our inventory in order to, in order to do what we need to do this year. The, the heavier pipes, which we didn't get very many of, and the larger stuff has gone up as the market has gone up, but I think it's a good time to get most of the pipe that we are doing right now, in my opinion. The numbers are down 20% in some areas, so.
Yeah, I know all that stuff's gone up tremendously.
Crazy.
Pipe and stuff. Where, where this, where are they from?
I, I, Contact is, they're, they used to bid quite frequently, and I don't remember if they're in Western Kansas or if they're in Southern Missouri, but we have got their, their materials before and, and been quite satisfied with them. They haven't bid the last couple of times, and I'm, I'm not sure why. It's usually, Wellburn and them are usually pretty close neck and neck, and they were close again this time.
Yeah, you didn't list on the bid sheet, didn't list.
Yeah, I, I don't even know who the other two were. I, I really don't.
Okay. Positive motion would be, I make the motion to award the Culver bid to Contact Engineering Solutions LLC for 94 various sized pipes in the amount of $75,262.97.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
Janet?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Cheer done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Hey, Sheriff, want to come up and talk us about the work release?
Good morning. Monday, we discussed, I think at pretty good length, the proposal that was brought before you to establish a work release program here in Franklin County. You were all provided with the, with copies of our adopted policy, as well as all the forms that we have adopted and put in place to maintain and run that program. So again, just to recap, this is a, will be for inmates who are serving a sentence and there will be a, a fee assessed to that by statute. And they will be monitored with spot checks and things like that as far as once they are out of our facility, they will be required to come back in every night. They're only allowed to go to and from work, get their work done. They can't, you know, stop at restaurants or take care of personal business, anything like that. They are still inmates. But this is a program that we believe will help some of our local employers, as well as the, the inmates have and their families, by allowing them to maintain employment, which as we discussed lots of times, and health insurance is tied with someone's employment. So we believe that this is a, a good thing for, for our community to have. But I will be happy to answer any additional questions that, that the board has also. Sammy Alexander, our jail commander, is here. If you had specifics on, on some of those things, that operations, we can answer for you.
Did you add language about requiring proof of work comp insurance for employees?
I don't know that we did. No, we have not done, we have not done that. I know that the one, and they one employer that we're already been in contact with does provide work comp in, insurance, but that is a, I'll make note of that, though.
That'd be important to me, just.
Yeah, and if.
It's the law, it's required anyways. I mean, aside from the fact that it protects us, so I don't.
And if, if you guys today want to pass this subject to that language being added, we can absolutely do that and, and.
I do, yeah.
I did make, I did make note of that, thank you. If there are no other questions, I can read the resolution this before you.
Question, Jeff?
Yeah.
If you decide this doesn't, doesn't work, and we passed the resolution today, would you have to come back to us and make another resolution?
This, I, my understanding is that this authorizes it. It does not require us to run that program, but it does authorize the sheriff to, to run, to operate the program. If there are issues with it, obviously, I'll be going to our county council or just explain to him what our issues are and, and seek legal guidance there.
Okay.
And I think depending on the nature of the issue, if it's just some procedural issue, I think that would be appropriate. If there are policy concerns with the program, then we, of course, would come back to you guys just to discuss, is this something we want to continue with? But this resolution, really, it's, it's just, I mean, obviously, we, we want the board's buy-in, the law requires it, but we're just trying to comply with the requirements of Kansas statute. So we don't have to do work release. It just says, if you want one, you need to have a resolution on the books.
Okay.
We don't need it read, do we?
No.
I don't, you don't need to read the resolution.
Want to read it, Jeff? Go ahead.
No. We didn't need it read.
I will if you want it, if you want it read.
You want it read?
We need to vote on that, too?
I don't care.
No.
I'd say it's not a proclamation, it's just a resolution. So if, if you just want to, Roy, if you want to seek a vote on, what's the number, Janet?
It'll be 11, 2111.
2211?
2211.
22, sorry, 22.
Positive motion would read, taking motion to approve a resolution 2111.
22-11.
22-11.
Make a motion with stipulation the language for requiring proof of workman's compensation policy would be added.
Thank you.
Janet?
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Cheer done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Since you're up here, Jeff, do you want to give a staff report? No, we're going to do a staff report.
Okay. Really, the only things that, I have a couple of different things. Last week, you know, there were some funerals over in Missouri for some law enforcement, some law enforcement deaths that, that occurred over there. And we had representation at, at some of those type of things from our office. But locally as well, last week, we had a funeral up in Wellsville for Keith Churchill, who was previously served as the Chief of Police at the Wellsville Police Department, and then also ended up retiring from the sheriff's office as a corrections officer. And we, he served, he served the community for many years and we appreciated his service. And it was our honor to participate in, in that funeral service as well. And then also this week, we, we learned that the passing of Larry Skeet, who had retired from the sheriff's office and was currently serving as a member of our sheriff's posse and volunteering to do, to help us out with various things, helping with some training programs and helping with prisoner transports and sitting at the hospitals and makes things like that. And those hours that our posse members put in are, are very much appreciated and that helps save on overtime and things like that. So, and he was continuing to serve this community in that capacity, so he will be missed as well. And the last thing that I have is that yesterday, we participated in the job fair at the Ottawa High School, which included juniors and seniors from every high school in Franklin County. Paul Bean was a big part of that, of getting that thing set up and, and running. It was a, it was a great program. It was good for us, gave our staff the opportunity to interact with a lot of those students and did some recruiting. There are some, there are some, a lot of kids in our county that have interest in law enforcement and had a lot of questions and were seeking, seeking guidance on some things and wanted to know what the opportunities were. That program did allow us that opportunity to, to talk to a lot of, to a lot of people in that capacity. We appreciated the opportunity to participate and, as I said, it was a, I thought it was a very successful program and I appreciated the work that, that all those guys put into. Other than that, if you have any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Derek, if you have.
Yeah, thanks, Roy. Just one more time, want to just give my appreciation and on behalf of our employees' appreciation for passing the premium pay policy. That's huge. That, that's huge for us. It's my management team, it just, it gives us a tool to help with employee retention at a time when we really need it. So thank you for that. I, I think now, kind of broadly speaking, going to turn my attention to the 23 budget and, and ways to find efficiencies so that we can continue to do even more as we move forward for our employees, but in a way that we feel like we are alleviating as much of the burden on taxpayers as we can. And, and, and we've had those discussions, we had them at the retreat. That's going to involve taking a pretty critical look at our own operations and continuing to find efficiencies where we can there. But I look forward to having those discussions with the five of you over the upcoming months. One of those, one small part of it, I believe it was just last week, we discussed the potential need for another county van. And you gave us permission to start looking for that. On the wake of that discussion, I had both David Lee and Kenny Cook reach out and talk about their respective trucks. So they both have trucks and they use them, but they're also often available. And so I think my thought process is, let's, let's see how that works. Before we spend taxpayer dollars on another van, we, I mean, we don't need two vans all the time. And if there is a truck available, and these are pretty nice trucks, they're crew cab trucks, you can fit four comfortably, probably five, let's see how that works before we go out and spend tax dollars. So provided the five of you don't have any issue with that, we feel like that would be a better use of county resources. And if it doesn't work, then I'll be back and, and we can start the discussion again. But are there any issues with that?
Wonderful. Sounds like a reasonable idea.
Yeah, okay, okay, very good. We did, Jeff said this, and I hope Paul will come up and give an update. We did participate extensively in Day on the Job. Know Paul put a heck of a lot of work into that, appreciate that. But I also know Sari Maple put a lot of work into that, Casey, Amy Hodo, they all had a lot of work into that. So appreciate the time that county staff have spent because this, again, retention is going to be our biggest battle. I'm, I mean, looking forward probably over years. So if anything we can do, we should. So appreciate their efforts and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Got the various staff here today. Sarah, like to say anything or Sari or come on up?
Just really quickly, and I don't know if Derek went over this on Monday or not, but just an update, we have 27 full-time vacancies and we have three part-time or seasonal positions that are open right now. So it has been very active, very busy for department heads doing interviews and for Amy Hodo and Cassie Harmon in HR, you know, just trying to keep up with the, the interview panels and reference checks and scheduling interview, scheduling post offer physicals and drug screens. It's just been kind of crazy. I will just say, probably the bigger concern is just the lack of applicants that we have for these positions. So they're taking, many of them are taking a lot longer to fill. So any questions that I can try to answer for you?
Yeah, I think it's a universal problem right now.
Yes.
Fill any position, so.
Yes. So, and that is, again, like what Derek said, you know, we appreciate everything the commissioners do and, and the premium pay bonuses, you know, that will be, I'm sure, very appreciated by employees as well.
Thank you. Kenny, Kelly, Casey? Get somebody up there.
Good morning, commissioners. I will again just express my appreciation on behalf of the entire retention committee and all employees for your kind words and your appreciation to the employees with the premium pay policy. And then I did want to bring up, the Chamber of Commerce reached out to Janet and I to find out that their annual banquet is, got postponed back in January. I know you kind of discussed going, but then we never did get any tickets for anyone because it got postponed, but it is coming up. It's at the end of March, I believe, March 31st. So we need to know if anybody would like to attend or if you would like to do a sponsorship.
Last year, you guys did a silver sponsorship, which was $375. And that does provide at least a couple of tickets, but I'm not sure. I tried to email Sherry back, but haven't got a response yet this morning as to how many tickets that provides.
I didn't know we did a sponsorship. I know three of us.
I thought when we discussed in January or late December that there was a few of you going, but no sponsorship. They just asked again, so I wanted to bring it up.
That's what, that's what I recall. I recall the decision being, we don't want to sponsor, but that a couple or several of you were going to go.
By the office afterwards, if you want to go?
Yeah, that's my thought. You don't have to answer here on the spot, but just let Janet or Casey. You don't have to answer here on the spot, but just let Janet or Casey know if you want to attend, so that they can reach out to the chamber.
That's all I have.
Good, thank you. Christie, got anything for us? Okay. Dustin?
Yes, sir.
Janet?
I have printed your community partner letters. I need like two minutes to go get them after the meeting, because I forgot to separate out, separate out East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging, so I had to reprint those for you. So I'm gonna run down and get those really fast in the administration office, and we'll have those for you. And if you can get them back to me by Friday, so we can get those results compiled and get something back to you.
And I believe we discussed this on Monday, but thank you for bringing that up, Janet. Are you guys, are the five of you, is Friday a fine day to have those back? Does that give you the time that you need?
Yep. Just drop them off at the office or Janet's office?
Either one is fine.
Either way, okay.
Or if you want to email, email me, I mean, I'm happy to send you the spreadsheet, and you can, if you're interested in doing it that way, put it in there, and then email it back to me, and I can print it there.
Whatever's most convenient. Want to do it electronically, great, you want to write it out, great, bring it to the annex, Janet's office, we will get them all in the same location, so however you want to do it.
Okay. Tom?
Roy, do you want to talk to Paul?
Yeah, I thought.
Oh, Paul, okay, come on up, Paul. Yeah, I was gonna get to you eventually.
Good morning, Commissioners. Well, yeah, yesterday was an especially great day to live in Franklin County with the job career day. We had over 600 students from every school district in the county here. We had a large number of businesses, when the kids came into the gym and saw all that, I had several say, I didn't realize there were so many opportunities here. So it was just a really, really good day. And I too want to lift up the great support we received from Franklin County on this, as been mentioned, Sari did a great job, Amy Hodo did a great job, Casey Brady, and all of the departments, and multiple departments that showed up. And I just was so appreciative of their work and their commitment to supporting this. I think it was important for our youth. And so I cannot thank the county employees, they showed up en masse and were very supportive, and I think it was a good day, a great day for our community, so I really did appreciate that. As you know, I'm on the community advisory for Advent Health, and want to echo Dallas' appreciation for the support that they receive. I sit in on those meetings when we talk about how we're going to utilize, or how they're going to utilize those funds, and want to assure you there's some, some pretty good conversation. But I also really appreciate Dallas and his team, because they come into that meeting really looking at how do we use these dollars in the best way for the community? How do we make sure this is doing things in the community? Having been a branch manager and part of a larger organization, sometimes there's pressure when you're a manager to make your numbers look good for the bosses at the home office. That is not ever, ever, ever an issue on the tax dollars that are dedicated to the hospital. They are very sincere and deliberate in how those dollars are spent here locally. So I just, I want to lift up Dallas and his team, and the way they go about it, I get to see it firsthand, and just wanted you, since you've appointed me, I wanted to give you my perspective of full confidence in what they're doing, so that's all I've got today, unless you have any questions.
We need to add on to your slogan, not only is it a great day to live in Franklin County, it could also be a great day to work in.
Yes.
For Franklin County.
That's right, that's right.
Work for us. We got lots of, lots of availability.
Great opportunities, you're right.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Good one.
Not a lot, but like to mention that Mr. Churchill also served on city council in Wellsville also, so he was a person that did a lot more than, you know, on the police force up there, he also served several years on the city council. And I had the pleasure of being their commissioner at that time, and worked with Keith real well in both perspectives. Every community needs people like that, you know. We're going to Wellsville chamber meeting this evening. I know Paul and I will be attending a round table in Wellsville tomorrow. It sounds like, from what I've gathered on it, it's just some business people. It isn't the city that's doing this. It's a, it's a combination of several business people up there wanting to know. And I'm hoping Paul and I will be able to give them some information, that we're already doing a lot of things that they don't realize that we're doing. I mean, because you just don't jump out there and see it on the front page of the paper, you don't see us putting it on our, you know, putting it out there and broadcasting what we did, or what we're thinking about doing. And then there's also a lot of things that just happen that it isn't a perfect known thing maybe for a while to come. And just like, we're doing a lot of improvements in a lot of the roads around the city of Wellsville right now, it just happens to be this is the year that that's the quarter, you know, it happened to be, you know, and then you talk about David about replacing a bridge up there, that is right in that area where they're trying to do a lot of big growth, and I'm not real sure a lot of these people know that, you know, or the things that Paul is doing day to day to promote economic development in that area up there. So I think that'll be an informational meeting, it might be really interesting. And Mr. Abel runs the nursing home up there, providing his facility and providing the lunch, and he's always really good doing all these dozen, a lot of times with the chamber, kind of backed off a little bit during the COVID season, but, but so, I think it'll be a real, a real good communication, just kind of let them know, and then let us know, too, that a lot of these people don't know a lot of things we're already trying to do, because we don't promote it and advertise it and everything, and it could be a good conversation. That's all I got.
Thank you, Don. Rodney?
I don't know anything more.
Ian?
Several of us went to the Southeast Kansas County Officials District Meeting, three commissioners plus several of the other people that, from several of our other departments. And you know, and I think when you go to those, it's not necessarily the program that's out there, but it's, it's actually just meaning, getting to know your other commissioners, because there's 105 counties, we're all, we all have the same problems, we all have employee retention issues, we all have different, all the different departments, we are, none of us are inventing, reinventing the wheel. And so lots of times, it's just about getting out there, and, you know, I got an idea that's really been working for us, you know, or being able to share something that's worked in your county, so I think it's really important to go to those, just so that you get out there and get to know the other people that are out there, so it was a good, a good meeting.
Oh, yeah. Just got a few things here. Of course, we have a luncheon here today, we're the host for that luncheon. Came up this morning, the KCCA meeting out in Salina, the 26th through 28th of April. I think we can go ahead, and I think three of us are going to plan on going to that and going ahead and register us. Don, myself and Ian are going, and we'll need rooms out there and registration for that. I also attended the Southeast Kansas Conference down in Garnett, got a nice high school down there, it was a good conference, and it's always good to meet with other commissioners and other department heads in that conference, so it was pretty well attended, I thought a lot of people were there. And that's, that's all I have. Entertained a motion, good journey.
Sure. Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.